All right, well, I'd like to call to order the Dover School Committee meeting at 6:30 on January 21st at the Chicaring Library. Thank you, everyone, for coming. The first thing I'd want to do is, A, hope that everyone had a wonderful holiday. Welcome back to the new year. But I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the passing of one of our own during the holiday break. Edward Liu has been a student and a member of the Chicaring community for years. Edward's made a long and lasting positive impact on his fellow schoolmates, friends, families, educators, and administrators. Not only will Edward be remembered for his wonderful gift to Chicaring, the Geodesic Dome, he'll also be remembered for his many years of courage and humor while with us at Chicaring. We thank Edward for his contributions to Chicaring and our wonderful community. Let's just take a quick moment, for a moment of silence, for reflection and memories of Edward. Thank you. So, I am opening up to community comments. Hearing none. The next item is the principal's report. Am I to guess, Deb, that you're gonna help out?
I am standing in, I am.
Wonderful. Thank you.
First, I want to thank the school committee and all of the SAC members who were able to join us today for our day in the life of Chicaring. It was a great source of pride and pleasure for Laura and I to be able to take you around the building today and have you see what it looks like in operation, as it were, and even to have lunch with us. We appreciate your time with us and your feedback and thoughts afterwards when we go to the meeting to talk about it. I hope it was as enjoyable for you as it was for us. Thank you for joining us for that. Laura has turned in her report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have to that, highlighting the responsive classroom initiatives that we've been doing with Pine Hill and hoping to expand that beyond just this last summer, but beyond the initial 15 teachers in each school moving forward. Happy to answer questions.
So, I asked some questions today, so thank you, about how the curriculum was going to be integrated or all the different SEL pieces we have. I did make a note, part of that responsive classroom is the sharing the aha moment. And we're always talking about dialogue that our parents can have with their student when they come home and not to ask about what they did on the test, or, you know, focusing on the whole child and the greater part of the day. So, if that can be shared out some way to parents in the newsletter or something, if they're already thinking about that, that's a great thing for parents to be able to ask in the car at dinner, to kind of keep reinforcing that at home as well.
Thank you.
And thank Laura for addendum. That was really helpful. Let's bring that all together.
Other comments?
It was a great morning.
It was.
I think really helpful for, it's helpful for us as administrators, again, building as often as we can, but it's really important for the school committee members to see, to connect the dots on the things that we talk about a lot. We talk about SEL and making sure that our curriculum is supportive, and we talk about RTI. We really get the chance, we get the chance to see some of that in action. And I just think it kind of completes the loop. So, thanks, Deb, to you and to Laura for putting it together. It's a great idea.
I know it's been brought up twice, but in my six years, it was a highlight, for sure, when I went through it a few years ago. I'm sorry I couldn't make it today, but I'm glad those of you that did make it, it's awesome. You know, it's kind of fun to see the little ones running around, and then when you walk into the classroom, they're looking at you like, "What's going on?" And then I'll be... And then the ones you know say hi to you, and you're like, "Shh." But it's a great thing, and I encourage every couple of years, as people obviously go on and off committees, it's a really important way to get insight into the workings of the school, because it's a lie. It's a living part of the community, so it's wonderful. Also, the personnel being fully staffed. I know that goes with effort on a regular basis. It's an interesting economy right now, and a lot of people have a lot of jobs, so it's not easy to keep it staffed. I know that comes with work, so thank you.
Thank you, it was great.
Are we back tomorrow morning?
Sure.
Next item is our warrant report.
So, included in your packet, it's actually quite a long list, since we haven't met since November. But you can see by fund what was processed and signed by your committee member, Leslie, on your behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? It's always good to see where things are going. And definitely every couple of weeks, you probably get a text to go to the town hall, so thank you for doing that.
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks. Okay, wonderful. The next item is our academic testing results for 2019. And I believe we're going to be referencing the packet. Dr. Reineman, is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
My apologies, I didn't realize that you wanted the full grade.
No, no, this is completely fine.
Okay, good. This is much easier, thank you. So, no major changes in terms of how MCAS rolled out last year in the testing, because it's almost, we're about to start the next season, two years ago. In terms of, we had all of our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students taking the test online, unless their IEP allowed for the accommodation to take a paper-based test. All of our students participated. Our scores continue to be strong, thanks to the incredible work of our classroom teachers. Someone said it today, in that as the kids come into that round of testing, it isn't such a jolt now. We really worked very hard throughout the year to have sort of the start of that mindset going. So, the fact that they're online and practicing reading and responding with the Chromebooks or the iPads. They are learning in paper how to read a nonfiction piece about penguins and a poem about penguins, and then how to compare and contrast and pull out the relevant details. So, when they're asked to do that on the MCAS tests, it's just what they do. We continue to be very strong in our multiple choice responses. We've always been good at those. Our writing continues to be the area that we would like to expand upon. Our open responses continue. They're strong, but if we have an area to work on, that would be our grow, in terms of our glow and our brows, we'd be working on that piece. It's interesting now, when the kids respond online, we actually can see everything that they write. So, when the results come out, we can then see how Andrew in 3rd grade responded to the penguin question, and then can coach with that. And inevitably, Andrew will look at that and say, "I wrote more than that." No, he didn't. What does that mean? And it felt at the time like he did. Now, remember, when they look at it, they're a year older. But it's an interesting piece for them to say, "Well, I thought I answered it." But, and if you hang out with any of your 8, 9, 10-year-olds, and you ask them to tell you about something, they're convinced they told you about the whole day of school, and they've given you like this nugget. So, it's really hard for them. At that age, development team would pull out the whole story and do a full explanation, so that would be a part of that.
Along those lines, tomorrow with the leadership team, so the administration from across the district, we will be doing some work with a data dashboard that basically allows us to take a deeper dive into how our students are performing, who's doing well, who isn't. This is all connected to the RTI work. It's not so much about getting higher MCAS results. Our MCAS results are exceptional. They're really outstanding, but it's more about identifying who's struggling and with what. That's the whole point of RTI, is identifying who's struggling and with what, so that you can kind of place a greater emphasis on those students and that particular weakness. And of course, every kid is different, right? They might have these strengths in these areas, but a weakness here, and the other kid might have strengths here and a weakness there. So, the RTI is really intended to be more individualized or focused on that particular student's needs. And the data dashboard, the data dashboard that we'll work with tomorrow, the item analysis and data warehouse that the state has set up is actually really helpful in this regard. And so, clearly, you've done some work with this, and it's something that we always continue to keep in mind. It is not the driving focus of what goes on at Chicaring, Pine Hill, or the region, but it is one measure that we pay attention to.
Would you say, Deb, is the level of stress or anxiety about MCAS that's are coming up, and by grade too? Is it, I'm being honest, is something that we should be alarmed of?
I don't think the kids have that much anxiety.
Really?
More. You know, 4th grade, they've already taken it once, I think the graders are a little nervous about it. But you know, as far as being on the computer, I think it's just where they live, so it's a very...
The teachers are nervous when they...
Teachers are more, I would say, to start with.
But it's sadly, the teachers are messaging that in a really nice way that's keeping the stress level down. Is that...
I don't think so, yeah.
I think so, and then...
They have our occasional, you know, stomach aches, or not as many tears.
And the tests are more even now, so the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade tests are more similar in that they all have multiple choice and open response. You don't have the dreaded 4th grade, "Long call, we take it, or write it," that's gone. So, it more evenly distributes the testing. There's two days of each subject area. We spread them out a little bit more, so that we have one grade sort of gets all the attention for a couple of days, and then the next grade gets the attention, and that allows us to concentrate our resources and then sort of make one grade special. So, 4th grade, 5th grade is testing today.
Okay.
And it doesn't, it's very rare if we go past lunchtime. They're usually pretty much done. There's always a couple of kids who want to take some extra time, but in the most part, they're done.
Yeah, the kids who usually go along are kind of like really dedicated.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's so great to see that, because some of those kids, you would have thought would have, you know, just run through it, and they're just like, "Oh my, I have this time, I know I'm supposed to use it." I think we have a better understanding of what the expectations are of the state. I think the writing component is always one of those. What do you want from me? Because it's not a check off the box. It's not, they give three examples, it's kind of the whole piece. So, the writing part of MCAS is always hard for us to figure out what we're supposed to teach kids today, because it's so interpretive.
It's difficult to see where your impact is until 15 years out, but I can tell you, my three daughters, having come through the system, are all really, really, really strong and confident writers, and I think it has a lot to do with the curriculum. And, you know, of course, my kids did not come to Chicaring, but they experienced very much the same thing. And so, it is having an impact. I know that other parents would tell you the same thing. Those who have graduates, Dawn, your children, it's really quite amazing, the writing skills of our kids. They are standout. So, something's going well.
Just as a mom who's never experienced it, and as a 3rd grader who definitely has a hard time focusing, I guess, and sometimes in the classroom, he uses headphones, are they allowed to do that, or how does that...
Yep, so any of the tools that they would have normally during the day, they could have as well. So, if they're, you know, they need to put up an office corral, right, have you seen those, full of boxes, they can use those.
Is that what it usually looks like, the classroom's full of those, or they're just kind of spread out?
Some kids opt to use them, some don't. We also spread them around. So, you saw some of those, how we spend a lot of time putting people into groups and tables throughout the building, whether they're in an innovative space classroom or not. So, we'll have to drag some of those desks out of the storage and set them up, because the state is very strict on how the kids have to be seated. It's really, the state would love it if we'd put them in rows for this testing, so they can't see each other's screens. So, we're trying to be a little bit creative with that, in terms of how we position them around the room. When we talk today, there's, they need to use gum, they can do that. Each classroom works with their accommodations.
So, are the children, do they kind of put in, like as parents, do we put in accommodation requests beforehand, or the teachers just...
Yep. And you'll start to get more information about that as we get closer. We try not to get too excited too soon.
And it's really, I know, this is the norm, you know, like what Deb was saying. I don't use the crowds in my room, I never have. But if I did, then I could use them. But if I did, my kids would be like, "What are we doing with these?" Because they've never used them. So, it's to make it as normal as possible. So, if your son's using headphones, you can do that. Some kids sit on wobbly, you know, the little squishy, what's the name of it?
Wobbly stools.
Not wobbly stools, hopefully, but the little squishy pads can do that. So, some kids, you know, whatever's the norm.
That's nice, I like that.
Right. And the gum thing, too, like that's, my classroom, we haven't used gum, so we don't use gum. But if other kids do use gum all the time, it's what is their norm. And so, if you're using the headphones all the time, then great, you use them now. I will say the classrooms are very quiet during MCAS, that's what's weird. So, sometimes it's a different, you know, it's a different experience for them.
It's on time, they have the whole day. Very rarely, we usually have to hope that they go back and check their work. We can't help them at all, so they decide in 30 seconds they're done and hand it in, kind of stuck. So, spend a lot of time self-regulating in how long, reach your work, check your work.
I know, that was always a tension, still, is with, you don't want, you want to make it very low-key and not add or too much, but you also want to reinforce, you should check it and not rush, and as a parent, that's a tension, and I'm sure as a teacher, that's a balance.
I think we just try to make it the normal expectation, so just because I'm not saying to you, you knew that yesterday I did.
Dr. Reineman, I seem to recall, there's been times where we've looked at trends, some of the questions. And I can't remember if that is something that's done around this time, or maybe the work hasn't been done, but is there any things, if you have done it, because I know you're very good at that, if there's been anything that sort of stood out, or positively or negatively, things that we need to sort of focus on, that, you know, maybe we can help you in some way, shape, or form?
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, when the results come in, we get embargoed results early to check, to make sure that all the students have participated, have credit for, the scores are there. And then when the scores are released, I compile materials, and I go in and talk to our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade teachers. We often will pull back someone who maybe taught 3rd grade the year before, but is in a different grade. Because like, people who sent those students want to know how their kiddos did, too. And so, we'll take that meeting and dive in and look at trends in terms of the standards. We've continued to do well in algebra, and look, this year, geometry, we grew, or we didn't. We do the same thing with all the ELA standards. And then, so we do the who you taught last year, and then we go back and do a piece for who you're receiving. So, the first one is a curriculum overview. So, are we not teaching about 3D shapes? Which was a thing five or six years ago, right?
Perpendicular was one.
Right, perpendicular is one, and we realized it was because we were calling them, it was a language piece.
That's a big calling.
But they were happening like after the test, so I know, we had 3D shapes a little more forward in the year. So, there were curriculum changes like that. Then the second part is the receiving piece. So, as a 4th grade teacher, I'm going to look at my students, and I have their individual results. And this is my set of 20 who are in front of me, what patterns and pieces do I see in my class? Every one in the class seems to be challenged by vocabulary. Or look, there's a subset in here that look like they need some vocabulary work. Here's my RTI work to start the year. So, that's, there's two ways of looking at the data. In terms of strands and trends, we continue the same, in terms of, generally, we don't have curriculum gaps now, which is a huge celebration, especially for the work the teachers are doing. And then it's the type of question. So, multiple choice, we're strong. Short answer, we're doing fine on. And that could be like solving a problem and putting in a number, or making a choice and putting in a short sentence. And then the open responses, which are the longer ones, are the pieces that were okay. When you see your scores were okay, but that's where I'd love to see us be able to expand, to some degree, the length of our answers, but the quality of some of our answers. And sometimes you'll look at an answer and realize, this kiddo didn't understand what they read. And why, what happened? Did they not understand? Was there vocabulary they got caught up in? Was there a name that threw them? Was the reading level too hard? Did they not have the tenacity to go back? Maybe they're just done.
It also speaks to the fact that all of our kids are different. And any combination of our kids could look very different, from year to year, grade to grade.
Test changes year over year. It's not the same test.
The test changes. You may have said, gee, it looks like our kids didn't understand this term perpendicular, and then you won't see that again for the next 10 runs, and yet you made an adjustment.
They do right now, though, what it means.
So, it's very inexact, and that, I think, is one of, and also sometimes feels as if we're not thinking of all of these kids as individuals. And I think that that is the refrain that I've heard from educators through the years. So, we value what we get from looking at it. I think we learn something about ourselves and what we're teaching and the effectiveness of our teaching. It's just not enough that we would want to predict an individual's future success based on something like that. It's just, it's just not enough, but it is helpful to us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you for all the effort that everybody puts in. You know, just even getting the classrooms ready, and obviously, you know, getting the kids settled down, and then what do they do when they're done with the tests, and where do they go, and it's, everyone's involved, I'm sure, so thank you.
Starting up again.
I know. Dawn, status of appropriations.
Yeah, so you have your statement out of January 16th, and what I'm trying to do is sort of retain the report, so if you had to read, if you had to go get your last report to read it, so there's not a lot to new to share. Your salaries are obviously still being driven by those post-budget staffing changes at quite a large number. And then, as we've already discussed, we are accounting for our non-building-based fed services and the expenditures part of your report versus salaries. And we've already incorporated that methodology into your fiscal year '21 budget, but you're seeing the variances showing up from that based on our '20 budget. And there's still some, well, not still, there are some unutilized funds from the summer programs that we didn't need to run preschool, so I'm actually now saying those are going to be positive salary variances, along with, as you know, we've been in and out of being fully staffed. So, obviously, anytime we're not fully staffed, there are savings there. So, there's about $15,000 to date of unutilized funds for EAs, on top of the $100,000 or so in the staffing positions, which, with a few other little tweaks, I'm projecting right now a salary savings for the year of $125,000. So, that's the good news. Expenditures, there really isn't anything new to report. We did finalize the insurance claim for the electrical, for the light strike, which turned out to be about a $30,000, so less the $1,000 deductible, we received a check for $29,000. And then that was posted against your reserve line for your buildings, because that's where we were putting all the charges. So, you saw a little bit of a negative variance before we got the insurance proceeds to counteract that. So, now that is net in your financial statements. And we've sort of, although it was a lot of work, we benefited from some of the things that need to be replaced. Will prevent you from having to replace them, given the life they were right now for a lot of your emergency lights. That was a big piece that the fire inspector, the building inspectors actually had us do, because of like the time they were running on battery. The batteries basically killed them, so that was one of the things I thought was sort of a benefit. Out of district, so this is where we saw some activity since the last time we met, and there have been additional placement costs of approximately $90,000 that you're seeing reflected in your statements. These weren't cases that were surprises. In fact, we already knew about them, and they're already incorporated into your fiscal year '21 budget. It was just that they were in flux, and they had not been placed yet. So, now they are placed, and we've encumbered the tuition for the rest of the year for those students. That brings your negative variance in out-of-district costs to approximately $214,000, which is basically right now being offset by some of your salary savings in your operating. But then remember, you always have your circuit breaker reimbursements you fall back on, which is $1,52623, that's your exact number. We didn't have that in November, because we were waiting for some things to be finalized. And it is already at 75%, so we won't have that little catch-up that we normally see at the end of the year. This is coming at the fully mandated rate of 75%, so that will be your circuit breaker number in June 30th, as it is now. Any questions on...
Did I, everyone get this memo from the MASC? About spending players, did you get that?
We got it by email.
Okay.
Well, I got it by email, just because I used to be at MASC.
Is there something that we, do we need to...
No, I think that's going to be based on, we have to wait till it's all formally rolled out. I think the governor's budget that's getting presented this week will sort of put more things into place. And so, we know how the funding, how the whole funding is supposed to be allocated. At this point, we really don't know. Most likely, our school districts aren't going to see a significant increase that probably predicates a spending plan. I think they're more concerned about those school districts that are going to get a little bit of a windfall from this, and how they're going to go about making sure that's applied. Exactly, exactly. We're going to be just probably getting the per-people increase, based on, you know, sort of our two towns that we're living.
Okay, so that's ongoing. We don't need to worry about that, right?
It's a great question, because when you read that, it's a little scary.
It is, but I think until they roll out, so you can actually see how all these funds are going to be distributed, we're sort of in a holding pattern right now. Because the other good news, and I'm waiting to see how it's all going to play out, we haven't, I think we've talked about it, because we haven't met since November, is that part of that is, the new Student Act is also picking up reimbursement for out-of-district transportation. So, theoretically, in fiscal year '21, we would be seeing 25% of our out-of-district transportation costs being reimbursed. For Dover, that's pretty significant, because your out-of-district transportation budget is probably in excess of $400,000. So, if we can start getting some of that back, and the plan would be 25%, 50%, 75%, 100% after four years. I will have to wait and see how that all plays out.
With the circuit breaker remaining the same, not impacting that?
Circuit breaker remaining the same for tuition. This is just covering transportation, which up until this point, there is absolutely no reimbursement for transportation.
So, that was something that many people were lobbying for, because, well, $429,000, big hand for a community. So, they got the message, I think. And I think that one is more equally applied.
So, that's the methodology they're trying to figure out, because we all treat, you know, out-of-district transportation costs a little differently. If you remember, we participate in accept, and what we're paying for it this year is the students that we had ride last year. So, that's all under research to see how the state's going to apply the reimbursement. Will it be what you pay, or will it be a per mile? You know, they're going to reimburse so much per mile with, you know, costs for driving and all that, so that's the same reimbursement per mile for all places, or it's going to be based on what you pay? So, that's what we're waiting to find out. It probably will have an impact on how accept does the transportation model, which we're starting to talk about now, because I'm not sure the state wants to reimburse for things that happen. You know, they want to pay, be current reimbursement versus, well, that's our cost from last year, we're just paying it this year. So, there are a lot of things to be worked out, but I think it's really exciting that we're even talking about.
So, that's the only big change you would see from this, for us?
For us.
Dawn, your philosophy would be to do what we do with the circuit breakers. Can you define it 100%, not rely on the...
I think we'd wait to see how it all plays out, but, you know, then that would be you guys telling us how you, the philosophy. It's just going to grow.
Right, no, I'm just thinking about how it's just going to add to our reserve situation.
Right, but I think we'd want to see it play out a little bit, just like the circuit breaker used to be anywhere from like 40% reimbursement to 75, to see how this plays out. So, not recommending we make any changes to the transportation budget for next year, because we haven't seen it played out, but knowing that there will be potential additional reimbursement that we can use to offset.
Has Dover ever not funded at 100% circuit breaker?
No, not in my tenure here at the district. I don't think so. I think they've always done it this way. Any other questions on current years? I always love to live in the current year. It's like you never really get to live in the current year very often.
Well, we're not in the current year anymore. We're now moving on to the next year, '21. That was fun while it lasted.
Exactly.
So, to continue the discussion around the budgets.
So I have given you um hard copies that are cold punched for you to put into your notebooks. And luckily, it's been a pretty quiet um budget development process from November until now. So I just have a couple of things to um mention to you. I did include for you actually the budget guidance um that we didn't have when we met in November, so you could put that in your section one. The budget adjustments that we're bringing forward tonight, so for the in-district, as you know, we have been utilizing a um our some of our Title I funds to pay for a math interventionist who's been coming in and doing some specialty um work with students who need it. Both Chicreen and Pine Hill want to move that a little bit further and um create a math specialist position. So we're looking to put a point five math specialist in um the budget for next year. This is not sort of a tutor-based person, but it would be an educator, so someone on our in our educator contract who would be a teacher to fulfill this. I think it's a little, it's a different level of um support for our students versus just a tutor. So we're looking to add that, and we are going to continue to partially fund it by your Title I grant. So we're looking to just increase your in-district operating budget by twenty-five thousand.
Wait, point five for us or point five together?
No, point five for you.
And point five for them.
Pine Hill's doing a point five. It won't be the same person in these first couple of years, but we're looking to potentially down the road, having someone that could span both buildings.
For consistency's sake.
Yeah, why, what, I know, I don't get into minutia, but.
Well, because we have someone in place in the other system.
Who could fill that role.
And they wouldn't necessarily want or could
Right.
take on another point five.
Right.
So that's really the big issue.
Right.
They have a full-time position now.
But if a position were to open on either side of the river, we'd probably try and find a way to do that.
Yeah, I could probably hire a whole, then a point five, right?
Yes, exactly.
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
And 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 it's funny you should bring that up because it's something that's on our mind when we talked about the literacy specialist. You know, we have two different literacy specialists now in Sherburne and in Dover, and both are very good. If we could take their strengths and combine them, they'd be this amazing kind of specialist. Uh, it's it's hard to do that, but we they work well together, and um we want to continue to kind of foster that kind of cross-pollination. Um, because it's it's really important that we're applying these interventions and these strategies and and working with these kids the same way. That's just important to us.
It's definitely beneficial once they get to sixth grade if you have. But probably not the same.
Yeah, and when and when you think about, you remember our program review last year for special education, that was one of the things that they said, you need to try and build greater consistency in your delivery of services. This is not a special education position, but it's the same idea.
Um, the second adjustment on your in-district is that we do have one um known retirement. So we are taking this opportunity to have a reduction in the salary because obviously this is someone who's very experienced and will probably bring someone in who's more in the middle of the matrix. So there is some salary savings of approximately thirty-five thousand dollars for that position. So those are the only two new um budget adjustments we have for your in-district. So that's going to bring your in-district down ten thousand dollars. So it's an overall increase of one point one three, which is pretty spectacular. But as you remember, most of it's driven by all those salary savings that we have in fiscal year twenty, that's rolling themselves out in fiscal year twenty-one. Um, out of district, I, as I noted, most of the cases that we are the placements that we knew about were already in your budget, so we're not looking to increase anything in your fiscal year twenty-one budget for tuition. But since we last met, we do have the final accept matrix cost, and we are bumping up your placeholder for that by twenty-five thousand. A lot of that's a combination of um the rider, how many riders you have, the mileage that they are going, and obviously, there's an overall increase in the cost for accept. So we just had to tweak the placeholder we have for you just by twenty-five thousand. Um, but remember, we are already seeing a substantial reduction in out-of-district due to um move-outs and some graduations. Um, so you're still looking at an overall decrease in your out-of-district of almost two hundred and fifty thousand. So overall, your ask for your budget is down a hundred and sixty-three, six, sixty-three uh for a negative decrease of one point five four percent. So it's good in this situation to see a lot of red. Red's not always good, but in this situation, that is good.
So along those lines, if I could just emphasize one other point. Running this, these three uh school systems is is complicated because obviously, they're supported by these two communities with fixed uh revenues, relatively fixed revenues. We don't have a Natick mall, we don't have um all sorts of industry and high-rise um professional buildings, so we count on our local um income taxes. And so with that in mind, we try, and I think this is really important to point out, we try very hard to make sure that when we have a year that we're down, we don't just fill it up and say, oh, this means we could add ten teachers, or we could build this, or we could, we actually ask for what we need. And I think that that's really important. We can still run an excellent school system and still have a a negative ask, actually be giving money back. So uh I know I take a lot of pride in that, I know Don does too. And it really started with Bill's um trend budgeting a few years ago with Don. But I think that that's a hugely important thing because that is how you build credibility with your community. When you need, you ask. And in a town like Dover, they will um support you. That's my belief. Uh, same thing with Sherburne. But if you don't need, don't just ask for the sake of asking. So we're really applying that across the three systems, and um I think it's it shows right here.
And as the Dover School Committee knows, because I've seen it over the years, out-of-district can fluctuate.
It can go right back up.
Turn of the minute, so um you know, don't take a lot of comfort in that, we're just happy that that's that scenario we are in right now. Uh, but that could change significantly. Um, I've included three other documents for you to sort of incorporate into your review of the budget. Um, the first one is your summary of proposed staffing. Uh, so this is sort of the summary I do so you can see how many educators you have, sort of by category, your educational assistance, building administration, custodial staff, and your central office staff. This is basically a snapshot of your salaries and what makes up the the total. Um, I will highlight that the um literacy specialist, that math specialist, the point five that we are including for you tonight is already incorporated into that number. Um, we're also not looking to change any of the classroom uh sections at this point. We can look at talk about the enrollment in a second. On the educational assistance, um we have, we're not asking for any more, we're just doing a little bit of a shift. So right now, I knew I had a um extra special ed BA that was because some students are graduating and moving up to the middle school. So we moved that one to your general education. So you can see in fiscal year nineteen, we had eleven, uh we had twelve in fiscal year twenty, and we're looking at thirteen um available for staffing in twenty-one. And that just gives the school flexibility based on the cohort of the students to potentially have more than one assigned to a grade. Um, as you know, we put two in first grade this year, um and that will, and there's two in um, no, there's not two, it's just how the the extras point in pre-K. Uh, so that'll give them a little more flexibility to uh the educational assistance. They're still reviewing the special education needs, so it may be that I come back in March and that number will shift. Uh, with our new uh team on board, they're still just working things out, so we didn't want to be too mature. So the third team that's in there for special education is their high watermark of where they think they need to be, and we could see some fluctuations in that uh over the next six weeks.
Can you remind us how the determination is on where to place?
So.
You mentioned we have two in one grade now.
So each kindergarten class has an EA.
Yeah.
So each teacher is assigned an EA. Then it's one per grade. There's also one for your literary specialist assigned to um that center because she helps with small or he or she could help with small groups. And then the rest of them are actually um how they're sort of deployed is based on the administration and where they see the need based on the cohort of students.
We often choose, if I may, um we've been trying to put two into first grade lately because it seems like such a jump to go from, you know, one teacher, one EA in each kindergarten classroom, our youngest students, we'd like to be able to provide more support too.
Two, two adults, you mean?
Yes.
In first grade, a teacher and an EA. Two.
To share with the grade.
Oh, I see, I see.
Right, right.
Instead of the one per grade that everyone else has.
Right.
But I do think the cohort drives that sometime too. That was that um heavy kindergarten class that we knew was moving up that might need more hands-on, but um so that's just giving them more flexibility.
Don, I have a question about the two point five literacies, that that point. So is the ELL teacher full-time?
Yes.
She's not at Pine Hill?
No.
Oh, okay.
She's been full-time here for probably the last two years.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
She's very busy.
Even though the math specialist will be somewhat covered by Title I, it's still allotted as a point five.
Yes, because we're we're picking up some of the salary in the general fund.
Okay.
So the twenty-five thousand is going to be added to some Title I money to create a position.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And that will be an educator in the contract versus a tutor.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the other um summary you have is of anticipated grants. And here we're talking about Title I and and such. So this sort of lays out for you the purpose of each grant that this district gets, um how much our twenty fiscal year twenty grant is, and typically, what we use it for. So the um IDA spec two forty grant, we actually fund um a multiple EAs through that grant. So we always put a couple of EAs. So you're not seeing in your general fund budget a hundred percent of our cost for EAs because three to four of them are assigned every year to be paid by the two forty grant. Um, and then Title I, you can look and see we're, you know, using that this year for the math interventionist. Two A covers the mentoring programs that we do when we have new teachers. Uh, the um Title Four A is a new grant um that Beth oversees, and that is um, you know, we has multiple ways that we can use that, which is nice. The early childhood um grant two sixty-two is is only for a pre-K, uh so we have to use that in the pre-K program. And then obviously, the circuit breaker um at the bottom. So these give you numbers that make up your operations here at Chicreen that you don't see in the budget I'm presenting, but I think it's important to see the whole picture. If we ever lost one of these grants, potentially, what would we be losing? Or having to add to our general fund. Um, the last piece of um information I share for you is the enrollment analysis. So we didn't see this, you just didn't see this last year this way because we really didn't have any fluctuations that we needed to sort of look at. But if you remember this from two years ago, the top section's basically taking all of our current sections as they are now, and that means by how many are per grade. Um, the first column is assuming that each grade just just moves to the next grade with actually no change in their enrollment. And then the next column is taking your three-year projections, your three-year growth projections. The next column is the one-year growth projections, and then I think just to have another column, we take half of the three. So this gives you a scenario. And then what I do is we color code those um class sections that would be below or above your class size policy.
Just quickly, for my own reference, so when I look at first grade, that was last year's kindergarten, right?
Correct.
And then kindergarten is just a estimation based on census and.
Yeah, and we know we are using right now the um number of letters that they sent. That is always fluctuates, um but that's just a placeholder for for right now. As that number continues to be more of a known factor, we will incorporate it. So if you see right now, if we don't change anything and we and our numbers um hold at that fifty-eight for kindergarten, you can see that we're below for that. You get to fourth and fifth, and you have some below. If we have five sections in fifth grade, you're going to be below. But then we have some sections in fourth grade that are above. So the table below then just takes and flips one of the sections from fourth to fifth, and then all your color coding you see goes away. So that puts us in line um with your class size policy.
From um fifth to fourth.
Yeah, sorry, I'm thinking it's the other way at Pine Hill. So yes, so taking that um, taking the fifth grade extra section and putting up with the fourth grade cohort.
And what do you say for kindergarten?
So for kindergarten, what I did in that orange column was say, okay, so say we do um three or four sections, let me try a couple of numbers, so fifty-four.
Should it be fifty-eight, though?
No, but fifty-four is our census.
Oh, but the fifty-eight above then.
Right, but then the next one I did fifty-eight. I sort of did uh four scenarios for you. I did fifty-four, fifty-eight, sixty, and sixty-four, and just showed you the three versus four.
Okay.
Um, we did have, year before last, we saw a much larger um kindergarten class versus the census. Last year, we were carrying like seventy-four, we ended up with seventy-nine. So it just, that's one of those grades, it's just really hard to project because you're, it's the biggest unknown.
Well, then, kids coming from private schools that we're not aware of.
Right. So um so we'll keep monitoring that number. So why we're not suggesting um or recommending at this point any changes to your number of teachers in the budget is that we do know of a um educator who's requested a leave of absence. So we know there's going to be an open position um that, you know, in a normal course of business, we'd go ahead and just get a long-term sub for. The fact that we're going to be hiring a long-term sub for that position potentially allows us more time to sit on this and wait and see how your kindergarten numbers come in.
So that's before the end of this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. So we'd wait and see, but we wouldn't hire, it's not the same as if we had to replace a real uh a full-time educator.
Right.
So this would only be a long-term sub anyway, because we have a teacher who's going on leave of absence. So we'd keep their position in the budget, and we would fill it with a long-term sub. So that position will just hold and not fill until we um have a better sense of what the kindergarten numbers are going to be.
Which we we learn as the year goes on, really.
Definitely with kindergarten, we know because people will keep coming for it, you know, they don't wait till June.
Right. And those letters go out when?
Uh, first letters have gone out, we kindergarten orientation end of uh end of February, the evening one, when the parents all come in, and that usually brings in a flurry of registrations. So that hopefully will, beginning of March, give us a better number again.
But we always know we see, you know, you start seeing the biggest growth is in your K to one, your one to two. So by this, we've sort of had the situation where we won't have to cut the teeth, cut a position because we have someone going on leave for a year. But then most likely, we'll see what kindergarten is coming from behind it, but even if you only did three kindergarten, you're most likely going to need four in first grade. So you would still be um, you would still be whole from that perspective. One thing we don't want to do is do yo-yo um hiring. So we really um think long and hard before we add or we take away because you want to look for longevity in that position, staying in the in the school and not having a lot of teachers in and out. Does that make sense to everyone?
That was really nicely explained. Any questions?
I I have one, if we can just go back to the um summary of proposed staffing, and you might not know the answer, and it might be that Dr. Reinem and um Don or even Dr. Kio, um, you know, we have a ratio that's better than two to one um in terms of educational assistance to full-time educators. How does that compare to our, you know, if you have any insight with some of your peers, if you talk in other schools or other districts, like again, you might not know, but I'm just curious.
I think you have to discount it for your special education, though, because a lot of those, some of those are student-specific. So um if you if you tip, take your special ed number and and back out the ones that are one to ones, and I think that would give you a better perspective of what um how the how we look at the ratios. We've been having sort of a, almost more than half of our special special education EAs lately have been one to ones. So I almost look at look at that as a separate category because that's so student-dependent versus what the school system is using for the general um education of students. I will say that um I think that we're definitely more generous than the counterpart in Sherburne, maybe like some of their budgetary constraints. Uh, and I think every school district that I've looked at actually sort of has different terminology for this support, and so it's really hard to look at it. If you look at some of the educational assistant contracts, which we do when we're, you know, looking to um meet with our groups, they, some of those are much more defined um positions that for us are just sort of that non-based, that sort of helps sometimes we get like the ABAs. Some of that's included in there. the ABAs, some of that's included in there. So it's hard to compare, I'll be honest, compare apples to apples unless you really dig deep and sort of sort it all out so you are looking at comparative data.
Thank you. Next item requires action around the consent agenda. In your packet, we have the school committee meetings for Dover from November 19th, 2019, town report, which has been submitted to town. And then there is two donations. One of, one was noted in Morris' principal report from the Dover mobile. And then there was another one, I believe, for drums?
Yes.
There's also a photo there as well. Is there any, any things that need to be updated, changed? Anything you guys got? So I'd like a motion for approval for the consent agenda as presented in our packet. Do I have a motion? Leslie, second?
Yeah.
Mark, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you. We also have in our packet communications for your review, minutes from previous school committees for Sherburne and the regional school committee. I'll note our next Dover School Committee meeting is March 5th. And we are going to adjourn...
Can I just, before you jump to, so March 5th will be your open hearing for your budget? Just I forgot to add that little bit in. So we will bring forward before your open hearing, any additional budget changes that we might have so that you can look at those before. Because whatever we have, we'll bring forward, we'll incorporate already to the presentation for the budget hearing. And Henry and myself and Andrew will be meeting with the Warren Committee on February 5th to go over the budget we have to be with them. And then the open hearing of the town is on March 16th or 17th, that Monday night. So after your open hearing. So that's sort of the budget process going forward. But you will, you will vote your final budget at your next meeting.
Great. Thank you, Don. We are going to enter into executive session, not return to open meeting afterwards to discuss personnel. Need to poll to go into executive session. Mark? Brooke? Henry, yes? Ashley? Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.